That's all. Is all the resolution.
I think we're good.
Okay, we are live.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our March thirteenth, twenty twenty four planeboard meeting. Do please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we do the roll ball, I don't know how many people are aware, we have a birthday lady here tonight. Sitting on my left, not quite ninety, but very close to it. Won't say congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Steve, please.
Chairman John Curry. Vicky Gannon.
Here.
Nancy Urbino.
Oh, I'll have to think about it.
Jack Mattis.
Here.
Bruce Prince is absent. Anthony Sutton.
Here.
And Christopher Saberto.
Here.
First on our agenda of the minutes from February fourteenth, twenty twenty four. If there are no additions or corrections, I make a motion, we accept them as they were presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our first application tonight is for twenty four Ross Drive. It's for steep slope protection and storm water management erosion sentiment control application. It's on town map six point ten dash two dash sixty six. The applicant has proposed to reconstruct the existing house with a new septic, install a three and a half foot high wall on a steep slope, provide plantings and additional storm water controls along an existing slope. The property for the record is located at twenty four Ross Drive, R ten zoning district. And let me correct that, it's not a three and a half foot high wall, it's a three point five inch wall.
Foot high, three point five foot.
Foot high, foot high, yep. Another correction.
Three and a half inches, that's.
It was never good at decimals.
That would not stop, that would not stop much.
Even a brick.
No. But it'd be a lot cheaper.
That's true.
Chairman, the, since the public hearing.
I was gonna ask you about the posting.
Yep. A legal notice was published in the Somers Record on February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four.
Okay.
And the adjoining property owners were notified via mail on February twenty second.
Thank you. Sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. Nice to see you again. My name is Andy Chong. I am the engineer for the homeowner. What we are proposing, it's a existing square foot house that is on twenty six thousand two fifty square feet, approximately point six acres. The house is existing. The, the landowner has purchased the property and we're doing renovations to the house. Part of the renovations included a re, the, the, the existing septic system was an old cesspool tank, a steel tank with one clogged clay leach line. So as part of getting a three bedroom, his plan was to do a three, three bedroom a single family house. Septic had to be redone. So in the process of redoing the septic, we, we did get approval from Board of Health for a three bedroom septic. It did require some grading and some earth moving, which resulted in a steeper slope. Some of the, the soil, the, the soil that were, that was brought in for the septic was pushed down the hill and created a little bit of a, a little bit of a slope. So what we had done to mitigate the steep slope and to collect the storm water coming off the site, we had designed a retaining wall and a bio retention basin and a swale which captured the water coming off the hillside into the swale and into retention basin. I had addressed Steve's comments. I did, I did receive another memo with some additional comments that I'll be addressing for this next mission. Some of it is really some field testing for the coltex and just kind of, you know, dotting eyes and crossing things. But basically, once the grading and the buyer retention and the storm water mitigation plan is in place, I think the next thing we want to do is we want to get the building permit so the homeowner can finish renting the house. The bio retention basin is basically a storm water mitigation system where storm water can infiltrate back into the groundwater table. It is a pre-engineered system where there's three feet of a sand and topsoil mixture, which allows for infiltration and water quality control and the retaining wall. Around the back of the bio retention basin will basically hold that water and keep it on the property without allowing it to discharge onto other properties. So be more than happy to answer any.
Okay. Let's hear from our, our planner and engineer and then. Yeah, I have no comments. Steve?
Yeah, thank you. In our comment memo, we had kind of a couple of key comments I just wanted to, to highlight and, and talk through here a little bit. The limit of disturbance, can you clarify that septic that was approved by the Board of Health, has that been installed? Does that still need to be installed?
The, the septic has not been installed yet.
Okay.
When the, when, when Mr. Tuma came by and, and we stopped all, all work on that, on that property.
So we would just want the, the limit of work to encompass all of the work, not just the, the storm water on the bottom, making sure that we capture that. The soil stockpile, the coltech unit at the top of the hill and the septic. In the rain garden, just for the board's information and background, what is the design storm for that?
I designed it for a twenty five year, twenty four hour storm of six point, six point five inches.
It's a big, it's a big storm. What? When we have a, a storm event that exceeds that, though, what would happen to the water hydraulically, especially given the proximity of that rain garden to the adjacent property?
I did not run a hundred year storm event, but I can. I, I, I can include that in my hydrocat output for my.
I think we would just want to make sure that, you know, that volume is, is managed and has a place to go on the property, whether it's, you know, additional freeboard, if it's a overflow, if it's an underdrain, you know, whatever, whatever it needs to be so that you know, given the proximity of that downhill neighbor, that we are considering those larger storms, especially coming off a, a hillside like this.
Yes.
We look at my comments here. As, as you said, a couple of, of cleanup items, just with wall height and a couple of things there. I think the detail, we had a question on the bio retention basin detail side slope, just making sure that that was, that was shown. I think the detail had a three on one slope and it looks a bit steeper than that, so just making sure that it's appropriately engineered. Yep. Yes. Yep. The plantings that you have proposed there, can you speak to the types of, of plants there? What they, what, are they serving a, an ecological function, an aesthetic function, some combination?
It's a, a combination both aesthetic and function. So the plants I have proposed in the bio retention basin come from the New York State Storm Water Design Manual for wetlands slash bio retention type of plantings. So these particular plant species will uptake a lot of, absorb a lot of water as well as provide aesthetic value to the back of the property.
Are they native species? Are they a mix?
They're all, they're all native species.
And my last question, just for the board's background, is there any new impervious surface proposed for the site?
There is no new impervious surface. The only impervious surface is the roof.
And that's the same footprint as existed previously?
Exact same footprint, six hundred square feet house. Currently, the house is a single, one, one floor. The, the proposed, the new house will be the same six hundred square feet in footprint, but will be two, two floors.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing and can hear board member comments if that's okay. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this subject? Yes.
My name is Joe Garrario, this is my wife Pam. We live at twenty three Shenarock Drive, which is behind this house is twenty five Shenarock Drive and I'm to the left of it. Okay. We've been living there for thirty two years. And in July, I believe, June or July. Am I? July. Well, in June, the homeowners redid their topography, raised up. And in the Fourth of July, the storm we had. The water from his property came down into my, into twenty five Shenarock Drive and came into my yard. And with all the water that was coming down from there, backed up my drain, flooded out my basement. I had to rip out my entire basement. We've been flooded out three times since then. I'm just, you know, I'm out of pocket and my basement is now destroyed. I have to have it all redone. And my house value went down. You know, and we're out of pocket at least ten thousand dollars right now because we had to rip out the entire basement. And from what I understand, there were no permits or anything like, anything like that, that was granted to him to do any of this work.
I'm assuming in the years you've lived there, and it was quite a few, you have not had this problem before.
Never had any water come down from the neighbors before. And she, she does have video showing it.
This was after.
This was in August.
After. A number of sandbags both on the hill to stop it from coming, you know, coming down from the twenty five to us. And then in front of our doorway so that it would not come, you know, breach that and still breached it.
And the building inspector, Mike Dunbar, even came out and looked at it a couple of times and walked up and down. And he saw where it was come, was coming from the property, through my neighbor's yard and made a right hand turn, came right into my water with my drain and just with all the rainwater and everything, the drain just backed up and just flowed right in there.
Questions are multi, absolutely.
And he's gonna, he's gonna tell you to, yeah, please.
Sorry, and Pam Garrario, for the record, I guess, if I need to. We do not oppose what they're, you know, suggesting. Our concern is that this wasn't done before they did the work back there. And there were a number of times and when they had people cutting down the trees that I was yelling because they had big logs that were coming down. I was yelling at the guys to watch what you're doing. And one or two of them did hit our deck. You know, the, the the legs that hold up the deck. So this all should have been done beforehand. What I would like, there should have been a COI permit for when they applied for the roof repair, the roof replacement. So I would request at least to know who their insurance company is so we can reach out to the insurance company and be made whole. I go through PTSD. I'm not. Every time it rains and it's spent at night now, so I can't see if it's coming down, but we're constantly going down to see if it's coming through. It's, it's just, it's hell to go through this. Not quite eighty nine, but I am sixty nine. So this is not something that we want to go through in our, our, at our age to have to go through this. It's, it's a hardship. And we need to have the place repaired and I don't have the money. We don't have the money. Ten thousand so far, it's going to be another twenty thousand or so to fix all the damage and make us whole.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry that you've had to endure some of this stuff. I don't think we, as a board, can get involved in any of your issues from the past. You may need to work with the building inspector on that and some other avenues that you can take. But what I can tell you is the dialogue that just took place before you guys spoke between the two engineers, what they spoke about would address a lot of your concerns moving forward. We can't account for anything that may have been done previously or improperly or properly, whatever, whatever, whatever the circumstances were. But these storm events that you heard them speaking about and the rain quantities, that's to prevent the type of incidents that you, and correct me if I'm wrong, town engineer. But that is actually what we are discussing now.
Right, I understand.
And I, I'd just like to make a point to the rest of the, of the town. Well, not, not, not just you, but if anyone is looking to do work in their yards and you have these slopes and Somers is very rich with wetlands and all sorts of sensitive areas. It really does behoove the homeowners in Somers to check with the building department to make sure that, you know, before you dig.
Absolutely.
And before we start changing any of the topography, that we are doing it properly to prevent any potential incidents like this. Now, I'm not saying that what they did was a direct result of what you have. I can tell you that moving forward, we're looking to mitigate and prevent, you know, a storm damage and excessive runoff. And these techniques that the engineers know about and are talking about, in order for us to approve this, they have to agree to doing that, and it sounds like they will. And that should help in any future rainstorms and preventing stormwater attacking, if you will.
Okay. The meantime, they have put up temporary black fencing, for lack of better terminology.
Silk fence.
Silk fencing, yeah.
Okay, one of, and they did a dual of it. One of that, those has come down, so again, you know, it's just a matter of time before, you know, an additional rainstorm causes a second one to come down and more rain to come into my house.
Was there a work stop issued on this or? Jerry, do we, did they, they did?
The building department issued.
Yeah, they may be a little leery to touch the fence that.
That, that work, that would not be prohibited.
It wouldn't be, okay.
And, and we'll follow up with the town engineering technician and building department to make sure that they're taking a look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But we inspector, Mr. Dunbar said they never had any permit? Permits to do any work.
Sorry, sir, can you go to the mic? I'm not picking you up too well.
Mr. Dunbar said that they never had any permits to do any of the work that they did there.
When they raised the foundation, they didn't have a permit?
I don't know. They put on a second story on the house and they weren't, they weren't supposed to. From, from what I understand, they're only supposed to put a new roof on it. And then they put a second story on the house without permits.
The second story, the second story doesn't come through us if they're not changing a footprint. That goes strictly to the building department. We're here for the site violation. Yeah, I'm just saying.
I, I understand all that. I'm in, I'm in real estate.
Okay.
I know, but, you know.
Yeah.
But they never had any permits for it, you know?
That's what we, that's what we've been.
The other works, I just want to find out what the insurance company is so I can make a claim.
You, you haven't been able to find out the insurance company? I hope they hadn't.
The building, the building, the, Mr. Dunbar didn't have any, had no insurance on file. So I don't know if he did or if he didn't, but, you know.
Jerry, I don't want to put you on the spot, but have you ever come across something like this in the past about?
About people doing things without permit?
No, not that, but then, but what, what is their, their course of action?
I would think that, that the town engineer would be working on this and that, that if there's a, they usually ask for the insurance information. I don't know why the applicant would refuse to give that myself. And you have a homeowner's policy and you should go to them and they in turn will, could go after the, the applicant and find it that way. What did your homeowner's people say?
I just got, we just got coverage for five thousand dollars of water backup and that was it. I, I, we didn't, I didn't think to ask them to go after somebody else because our, our coverage wasn't there. We didn't have the coverage, so I didn't know that they would go after somebody.
You would? Yeah. Wait till afternoon, you can talk to me.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Board member comments?
I'm horrified.
I mean, I, I, I'm just speaking for one of, of seven, but we're, oh, I'm sorry, is there anyone else? I'm sorry. To speak, please.
Thank you. My name is Vincent Tesolo. I live at twenty six Ross Drive, right next door to the property in question. I've been living there for twenty one years. I, first of all, I'm very sorry for everything that's been happening to your property. I've had, had a second and different house where it had a similar kind of situation and it's tough. And my grievance is very different than your grievance. But when we talk about property value and the beautification of this town, this is an absolute disgrace, what's going on here. That house has been sitting abandoned for years. Gutters have been falling off, the, the deck was falling off. Where is the town? Does they, do they ever look and see the dilapidation that's going on? So now somebody comes in after a, a whole estate and all, he comes in, he's trying to do the right thing and gets stopped. And, and I watched for a year and a half now. Stop order is sitting on the property. The town comes once in a while, they get out of the truck, they look around, they get back in the truck. Nothing happens. Nothing moves forward. And I'm sitting here tonight. Everybody's got questions, but nobody has answers. You don't know what the building department's doing. The building department doesn't know what you're doing. When do you all get together? Why are we sitting here talking about a three and a half foot stone wall? Let's do it. That house, my house value is down. Their house value is down. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's horrible, that street. There are three homes on that street alone that are abandoned. Just on Ross Drive, what are we doing in this town? Do we care? Please do something and let's get this thing moving.
Well, I, I can assure you when, when eventually they do get permission through our outside consulting engineer, it will be a safe, it will be a safe site.
I, I appreciate that, but let's.
But as far as, I know what you're saying, but that's not our.
I know, and, and this is the struggle.
I know.
As citizens of this town, you pass this off to the next and that's not right either.
Yeah, we're not really passing on, just.
Well, I know, I know, John, it's just that.
I would, I would suggest go see supervisor Scorano.
Yeah, that's.
That's what I would suggest, seriously. He's very amicable to, to, to listen.
But I know that several neighbors, we've got neighbors across the street from that property that called and complained. I live right next door to it and look, have to look down on it and it's, it's just, it, it's a tragedy what it looks like.
Yeah.
The, 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 the paper that wraps it is all ripping off, it flies in the wind. It, it looks like, where do we live now? So, yeah, we've called the supervisor. It's not moving any faster. This is going on almost two, we were in the middle of COVID when he bought that property over. So I don't know the exact dates, but let's just move on. I mean, I was going to originally buy that property and I'm so thankful I didn't to put my mother in it and rebuild it because of all the trouble he's faced, I would have never been able to afford it.
Just an, an additional suggestion for you. Everything that you've told us, you may want to bring in, as public comment at a town board.
I will.
And the reason for that is, is that we're not a legislative, right? So any, any issues that you may have with this process, we can't change it. We only ensure that it's being done by the process that's on the books.
Right.
Any changes to the books is going to have to occur from the, the town board and the town supervisor. And yes, email correspondence is great, one on one and all of that.
Yeah.
In order to really bring your voice heard to the board collectively and to the other residents in the town who may feel the same way as you and not realize that, oh, you know, I experienced the same thing on my block. And then now we have more folks coming.
Yeah.
Board. And then that just sort of changes dynamics a little.
But with all due respect, you guys run the property piece. These folks endured the problem back in July of last year. We're coming up on April of twenty twenty four. So what's been happening for the last ten months?
What? This is all new to us at the last meeting.
Yeah, this was on our agenda last week.
The first time we heard of this, I can tell you right now.
Yep.
First time, not, not this meeting.
We were aware last month that there was some work that had been done.
Yeah.
Or begun to have been started or whatever. But other than that, we didn't get into all of the details. That's why we opened a public hearing, right? Now you've informed us. That's all part of that process that unfortunately does take time. Right? But what it does prevent or should prevent is the issues that you guys had, right? So if we followed the process the way it should have been followed and the homeowners applied for permits and then they were told, hey, you know, this property is sensitive, you need to get permission and approval. Things could have changed a little bit and that's why I looped that back to what I said earlier about how important it is to get the proper permitting. Even if you don't, if you're not sure, the worst they can say is, hey, you know what? You don't need one for that project. And maybe you wasted ten minutes coming up to the planning and engineering department to figure out whether or not you needed it. So again, not directed at you, but more directed to the community at large. Right? And then, and this legislative, this bureaucratic process, it does take time. But that's because there's so many agencies involved in this. It's not just the town. It's the state, it's the DEP is, and there's so many entities. And we just like to ensure, we have to ensure that each step is being done properly. So I, I can appreciate, you know, your desire to get this thing sped up. It's been an eyesore in the community. I can assure you that we haven't wasted any, the planning board hasn't wasted any time. We, we opened this project up last month. We opened the public hearing. The engineer came and gave his, his second rebuttal to information that we gave him. Public hearing, you guys spoke and then the process continues.
Quite frankly, if we didn't have a public hearing, we would have known none of these. You wouldn't have known the damage to the neighbors necessarily to the basement.
You know, we are not, not specific to that, but certainly the town is aware and, and I don't want to speak since I'm an outside consultant directly on behalf of either the building department or planning and engineering department. But in my conversations with them, I am aware of, you know, water damage going down the.
Okay.
And, you know, ultimately, the town can only move as fast as the applicant provides plans and information that comply with the code. Certainly, as soon as we get information from the applicant, we review it in a timely manner and provide comment. And, you know, that we move as fast as, we can only move as fast as the information that, that we get. I think from the town's perspective, something was done out of order. The town issued a stop work order as they, as they should. And it has taken time to get that resolved, but ultimately that's on the applicant for how long they have taken to present compliant plans to the town to address. Ultimately, we want to make sure that it's done right and there aren't continuing issues, but we're moving things as fast as.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go Rams. Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I would like to make a comment, just in the historic society, Shenarock was created before zoning. And it was created without any rules, obviously. And in very small lots. I beg your pardon?
Yeah, it's true.
Yeah. No rules. And, and, and this is part of the, the result. You had places that were built on that shouldn't have been built on in ways that shouldn't have been done. I'm not making excuses, but that's the history. And certainly someone, several of you should go to the town board meetings and you have, at the beginning of the meeting, they used to give you five minutes to have, they've limited to three minutes per person where you can speak and you should say the lot, get the lot number, the, the abandoned house number and say it is a threat to the community or, you know, whatever it is. And what are they going to do about it? And believe me, they have to do it. They have to address it. They have to because of rats, disease, you know, spell it out for them, do a little research, what it means when you have an abandoned house falling apart. Children playing, getting hurt and injured. It's going on all the time. Certainly do it.
I just would like to make one more point. One of the purchasers of this property is a contractor. And you would think that two years ago, when he bought the property, fully aware of the requirements of an architect's drawings, plans, going to the building department, going, getting permitting and doing all of this work two years ago, when he was buying the property. And none of this would have happened. Thank you.
Any other board member comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say that, you know, I'm new to the board, but I, I, I'm not new to Somers. And I, my observation would be that. I my observation would be that if this was under a normal condition. And the person bought the property and understood what his plans were to. Fix the property up, that um. The it would have become aware to the town sooner because there would have been permits and plans and discussions that would have had been filed beforehand. And it I I sincerely doubt that site work, which ultimately led to your flooding situation. Uh, would have been permitted without, you know. Proper planning and and procedures. So I I would, you know, just in in terms of that gentleman's comments. Um, you're here because the system works, but it 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 works very slowly in terms of identifying what the problem is, and then. For the very reason of calling a public hearing to find out what everybody else's opinions are about what 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 went on during the course of the last two years. I remember that storm. Um, in July, because I had basement flooding in my city. Um, and it seems like um. Those. Hundred year storms are happening about every other year now. You know, and um the drainage that's in place is legacy stuff and historic. And and um, I think what we're doing, what we're seeing is is a problem, but again. The process is working to a point, although it 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 seems, I'm sure, as the. The recipient of the problems, that it's not working in your favor quickly enough. And and, you know, we can assure you that this board will do everything that that's within its power.
Wanted to come and say we are not opposed to this work. But we need to know what are repercussions, what what we can do, what our resources are again.
We understand perfectly, believe me. And I would suggest to you, sir, I'm not preaching your lecturing. I doubt that this board is gonna close a public hearing. I feel quite confident about that tonight. But I think you have a lot to do. The more I hear about this, I'm very concerned about testing for a hundred year storm. Follow? I mean, you agree?
Yeah, that was that was our comment, and um, and I think that that's what the applicants.
And it was also brought to my attention. I know you brought seven hundred, I think roughly seven hundred yards or you someone brought seven hundred yards of fill, said it was from Lawton, just. As a precaution, because it's our responsibility and due diligence. I think we need proof that it's came from there, just because if it didn't. I'd hate to be liable for something that happened. You know where I'm going?
Yep, absolutely.
So if you can, you could please bring proof of that for us.
Yep, yes.
I have complete utter faith in Lawton Adams and his material coming. I just want to make sure that that's where it came from.
Yes, I I'd also like to make a few comments as for everyone's.
Okay, just is any more board member comments?
No.
I just have a question. I think that at the last meeting, the engineer. Recounted the um work that was done with the fill. And suggested in his description of it that there hadn't been a permit. I asked explicitly if there'd been a permit. He said there wasn't a permit. I then asked staff and council if you could follow up. And I and I apologize if I somehow missed an explicit statement in the memo. But I think I asked if there was a notice of violation issued for work done without a permit. And I think you got gonna look into that. And I don't, and so if you could explain the relationship between whatever answer there is to that question. And the discussion of the stop work order so that I better understand. And I apologize if I again, I I looked, but if I somehow missed the message, I just and I I think it would be good also for the record, since I'd asked the question at the last meeting, if you could answer it here.
My understanding um is that there was a a stop work order issued, and as part of that, there is a a notice that. Work was being done without a permit, and that's why the stop work order was issued.
When was that issued?
I think shortly after the work was done. I don't think it it took long.
So it was so it's been since then?
We were in July. It could have been prior to that.
Well, you couldn't issue a permit until the violation or the violation until it had occurred, right?
And and.
Well, the second story had been in process for months prior to that, so it could have certainly been stupid prior to that.
I don't know that there was a complaint or knowledge.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Was the fill the the reason for the stop work order, or was the 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 putting the second story on the reason?
I think it was a combination of both. I think that they were they were both uncovered at the same time. By the by the building department.
Okay, thank you.
There wasn't a separate. Both works, both the the fill placement and the work on the home were covered by the same stop work order. There wasn't a separate stop work order for Phil versus for the bill.
All right, thank you.
Jerry, are we allowed to ask the applicant to provide the insurance information to the neighbor? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Yes.
Okay.
People are coming here and they are requesting the board to approve a project. Uh, a project which uh. The Hundred Year Storm is gonna become, it looks like, uh, part of this, and it it doesn't seem to be any. Anyone who's saying that this did not happen. And, you know, I I don't see why the applicant wouldn't volunteer such information. I mean. That's that's my own, you know, you you can ask and they can't tell, and then. So the dilemma here is that to slow this project down. Is is totally not in the interest of all these people.
Understand, understand. But it's two separate issues in a way, isn't it? Yeah.
You don't want to make it a stupid.
And this board is not an enforcing agency, and it's not a legislative agency. But yes, this 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 lies within the the purview of the building department, but you do not want to stop. This procedure. Uh, but in good faith, in my opinion, an applicant comes in here in good faith, acknowledging that certain things have happened. Uh, they should, you know. They should act as this board usually suggests people act as good neighbors, and that would be a part of it. But there's, you know, there there's other things that can be done, and, you know, there's been suggestions to go to the supervisor, to go to the town board to. And, you know, I I think you hear from the consultant that the town is aware of this and has become aware of this now. I don't think that the their problem, the second story should not have exacerbated the water problem. The water problem is from the fill.
Correct. And and the second story, that that goes to the building department, that's.
Yeah, that's a that's a building thing which, you know, you know, it's a maybe it's a violation, but it's it it's not going to uh cause. This couple's basement to.
No.
But it again, the second story. So i- in in my opinion, yeah, if there's a note, you don't want to get this bottled up.
No.
In the in in the courts and stuff like that, you want to put the this board wants to proceed with this, and the individuals can proceed. Uh, on their own to see if they can get any remediation, and hopefully. There will be an accommodation accommodating applicant. And from the way I hear the engineer, and that's the only person I've heard from the applicant, it seems to be that seems to be the tenor of his application.
Okay, I would suggest if you get back to your client and and maybe if he would provide that, I think this board would be very happy to hear that.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can.
Okay.
Ask him for um. He's 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 amenable to, I mean, he 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 understands what what he.
Okay.
What he did. Unfortunately, I I I myself, the consultant for him, really didn't get involved. In this project until all of the trees were removed and the vegetation was was.
Till after the horse was out of the barn, yeah.
Yeah, so um, you know, trust me, I I live in this town, I work in this town, I want to make sure that.
Right.
That these things don't don't happen.
You're trying to correct the problem.
Yeah.
Yes, I I I understand.
And so are we.
We understand.
I have one quick question. Can you just point to where that wall is going to be?
So the wall is going to be along about ten ten feet back from the property line.
Mm hmm.
The property line is right here. This wall is going to be on this lower portion of the bar basin. So it comes down this hillside, it'll either hit this channel and go into the bio retention basin or flow into the bio retention. Completely, then this wall, based on this section, kind of prevents the flow from.
Thank you.
Wall.
And the footprint of the structure, just if you could.
This this is the bottom of the bar.
No, of the building, it's.
Oh, the houses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's really not much between the septic system, I assume is.
Is right here.
Yep.
Otherwise, no.
Right here.
Okay.
Doing another plantings right in the middle of the slope to slow down whatever. This area is relatively flat. It's about a twelve percent slope. It's from here down. That's where it gets steep. So we're also proposing another volume is right here to prevent water velocity from hitting this top of the.
So to to accommodate a hundred years, would that. Would that fire some kind of a French drain that takes the water? The overflow and moves it down to the the next road?
Um, that's for the for the engineer to sort out and for us to review.
Okay.
I don't want to comment on on his creative actions, and I know they have a good engineer.
I have a question. Of the engineer. Uh, actually, I had this question before I knew all the history. And I just remembered it again. That wall. Is supporting the bio retention basin. So that wall's pretty damn important, right?
Well, it's it's supporting the soil that comes back up from the bio retention basin.
How deep is the footing for the wall?
So I'm proposing to use a ready rock wall system. So a ready rock, ready rock wall system are basically gravity blocks. Uh, so how the gravity block system works, it's it's a little different than, say, like a unilock wall where it relies on a geotextile. To for the soil to 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 compress the geotextile to prevent the wall from moving. A gravity block wall is basically what it is. It's gravity. It's. It's a very heavy block that locks into place by two balls that's on top of the block. So the top block locks into place with the bottom block. So this particular system is used, like, for example, if you take a look at a lot like a Home Depot. Uh, you know, those big block walls that are fifteen, twenty feet high. It's that type of of a block where it's really heavy and it doesn't move. So part of my design uses those blocks, and I can provide the calculations for the the ready rock wall system. There's software that. I use to to come up with that configuration and the size block required to prevent hydrostatic pressure from pushing up against.
Does have a facade on it?
Yes.
Would the backside be visible to other residents, to the adjoining property?
Uh, so each so where where it's under under underground, so to speak, it's 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 faced in the front. It's it's facing the 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 facade face is facing the 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 neighbor behind twenty four.
Got it.
When it comes out of the ground, it's faced on both sides.
Is it possible uh for our next uh meeting that you could provide a graphic of what that wall would look like?
Yes. Yes. I have a.
Elevation.
I have a detail of what it looks like on this next sheet. On on top, but I can provide an actual picture.
Yeah, that would I I had seen the 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 submission, just something a little more organic.
Yes.
My concern was not the look. But how.
Strength.
It's strength of the footing. I grew up in Yonkers, which is a hilly city. In a neighborhood, I grew up on a hill. And an older house. And the rock wall that held up. The house up above my house. After thirty years gave way. So I, you know, just reality, I just what I was asking.
Yes, well, these uh the the ready rock block system is an engineered block system. So there's there's software, there's calculations that uh I have to do to make sure that hydrostatic pressure does not cause the wall to fail.
And.
It does. There's not something that goes into the 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 hill itself, pulling, holding them back in?
No, so how how the ready rock system works, so each block is about a ton and a half. So as you lay out your first row of blocks, the second row of blocks lock the first ones in 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 place.
Yeah.
When you get to a certain elevation, as it comes out of the ground, ready rock uses, it's called a hollow block technology. So you have a gravity block on the bottom, which. Solid chunk of concrete that locks into place. As it comes out of the ground, the hollow blocks have rebar that tie into that block. And they. Well, no, they're hollow because you have to fill them with concrete after the rebar is set in. Right? So that so the the those types of blocks are used a lot in in river river channels. So they're they're specifically used for for water.
Five shatter rock because that wall would come down to him.
Right, well, it's 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 about fi- it's about five feet, but we're also about ten feet away from the property line.
And town code requires walls of this height to be engineered and with an engineer stamp. It's not just something that the contractor can put up at the tight.
What what is that for threshold for my own?
Four and a half feet.
Okay, but this is three and a half.
No, this is higher than that.
Yeah, I saw the original submission was three and a half. We were go- we were gonna do a wall in the middle of the slope. But as I was addressing Steve's comments with with the SWIP report and everything. Um, I I we I I I decided it would be a better approach to move that wall down and use that to enforce the bio retention basin. Uh, well, we we didn't really, I didn't feel having a three and a half foot wall in the middle of the slope would really do anything.
And so how is it now?
Uh, it will be five, it will be five and a half.
Five and a half, so it's a foot over the.
Right, which is why I'll 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 be providing calculations to start it for for review.
And plantings are not going to top the wall, they're gonna be behind.
They're gonna be within basin area. So if wall is this high, the basin is gonna be here. The plantings will be planted along the slope of the basically in front of the wall. Uh, and then also on the bottom of the basin itself.
Any other board member comments? Okay. Do we give you enough? Direction for the next meeting? Okay, and am I correct? I spoke out of turn. I don't think we want to close the public hearing.
Oh, no.
No, right? Okay, okay, good. We'll see you in April.
Excellent.
I'm sorry, do you anybody you want some more? No? Okay.
Would um, would there, Steve, would there be any benefit to us doing a sidewalk uh at this uh, just to get it like a better idea?
I think it's a good idea. This is a tricky site, as I think. I've been.
Do you want to wait till he gets back you with a a a more detailed plan for a one or that's not gonna?
I don't think that that is necessary for the.
Okay.
The schedule of sidewalk if you so so choose.
Can.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you have like some stakes or something so we see more specific where the wall is gonna be roughly, even if it's a flagging?
I can even meet you there.
That's fine. Okay, let's set a date.
Yeah, I mean, normally we we don't do sidewalks for steep slopes and things along those lines, but given the complexity of it and the history behind it and. Couple other factors, I just think it's best if we really see what's going on for ourselves. Um, and then take that back, we can deliberate on that and then, you know. Offer up some some advice or.
And just to comment on the this this early storm, the storm events. Um. I do remember the storm that happened in July, and there was another storm in August, I believe, also those those were the two big storms that happened over over the summer. Uh, the highway department did. Did notice the flow coming off of Ross Drive was a big factor that came down the slope. Granted, the lack of vegetation on that slope didn't help the situation. Uh, right? So the more so so stormwater is based on on curve numbers, right? So if you think of pavement has a curve number of ninety eight, that means the second water hits it. It ought to booze very fast. So because this site was originally wooded, grass, a lot of leaves on the ground, the curve number was was very low, which meant it take it took a long time for water to get from the highest point to its lowest point. So during one of those storms, the highway department did notice a a large volume of water coming down Ross Drive, coming onto twenty four and then coming down that hill. So since then, they have paved a a a one foot high, one and a half foot high curb all along the front of Ross Drive.
Yes. After that, though, there was one other incident where we did get water in. That we're aware of, but yeah. And so we put up more sand beds.
Yeah.
It's it's been, it's been. When it was like that, but before. Before he did. The topography change in, you know, thirty two years we've been there, we never had any of this. Any of this.
Right.
And the road's been like that for years. You know, the only time we got the water is when he redid. All its progress. You know, the only time we got the water is when he redid all the topography and took down all the trees.
Yeah, so removing trees, removing vegetation causes water to move quicker one point to another.
By the water cave.
And rapidly.
So we don't want to blame it just on the town, what the town do help subsequently?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
But we did still get what one other incident that I'm aware that we're aware of, where we did get water in the house, so. Again.
I'm sure this will help even more.
Well, the we wanted yes, that'll look nice.
Um, I just, is this Saturday okay with you? I would just, is the Saturday for a sidewalk okay with you?
Uh, this this Saturday?
I mean, just kind of pulling, but we want to do it early.
Like like eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock?
Get up at eight o'clock?
I'm the gift one. I always
No, no, we all want to be in, yeah.
Yeah. Just get a smart notice.
So unfortunately, I'm a judge at the at the Westchester Science Fair this weekend at the high school. Uh, so I have to be at the high school by eight thirty.
I don't think we're going to be long.
Uh, if
Right, Steve?
It's well, it's a half an hour from here to there, so I don't know that that's compatible.
That's true. Oh, he got, oh, he's gonna be there at thirty?
No, he can't be there. He can't be in White Plains at eight.
Oh, White Plains?
No, it no, it's it's here in Somers. It's it's at the Somers High School. Yeah, so if if I can do eight o'clock, I just have to be at the high school.
We'll be there at eight. Yes?
Eight o'clock, yes.
Eight o'clock, okay.
I would be there earlier if
I was seven forty five?
Do seven forty
Seven, seven forty five.
Totally.
Sold.
Seven forty five.
It's Saturday.
Some of us have kids.
No problem. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's okay.
Those guys if he gets somebody who knows what he's doing.
I know. That's that's part of our discussion. Next is uh, just some discussion. I'm going to let our town planner run these next two.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it was brought to my attention by Nancy Gremino that speed humps had been installed up at Tractor Supply. So I followed up with with the building department. And what had happened was there was a request by the owner of the the property along with Tractor Supply that there was an issue with with speeding on that back road. And so they approached the Bureau of Fire Prevention to have as a health and safety issue to have speed humps installed in the back there. So once it was brought to my attention, I raised the issue with the building department. I spoke with Steve Wolfle. Uh, and what we're going to request is that Tractor Supply and and the and Regency, which is the new owner of the shopping facility, submit a site plan amendment to include the the speed humps in the on that back roadway. Uh, and in my discussions with Steve Wolfle, he also said that there may be some other kind of cleanup items that need to be reflected on an amended site plan. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that the issue was brought to our attention. We brought it to the building department. We've discussed it with with the engineers, JMC, who's the the engineers and with, and we made the property owner aware of this issue as well. So at your next meeting, we hope to have a just a very straightforward site plan amendment relative to this and maybe a couple of other minor issues.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring that to your attention. At the last meeting, you approved the resolution for two Hagman Court. And as part of that, the Open Space Committee had indicated that they still needed some more time to do part of their review. So we provided them with information. They've reviewed it. They came back. They're still looking for additional information relative to trees and tree removal. But we're what we will do is the applicant has provided the information. The Open Space Committee will meet again. They will provide comments back to to the town, particularly to the the Steve Wolfle. And he will handle that relative to his permitting authority relative to tree removal. So I just wanted to bring the board, make the board aware of that. And just going forward, I I've been working with with Wendy Getting in our office to try and make sure that from a timing standpoint, we have reviewed, anything that comes in immediately goes out. But it's the scheduling of the meetings where they're being reviewed and we're just waiting for those comments to come back that we're going to try and keep a little closer eye on to make sure that there are no hiccups with respect to the the processing of applications. And then the the last matter that I'll bring to your attention. Uh, you may recall that the Somers Fire District owns property down on one hundred. They're in the process right now of creating a separate lot so that the New York State Police can move relocate their headquarters. That process will be initiated tomorrow night with the village, with the town board. Their request by the project engineer to rezone the property from R eighty to the NS Neighborhood Shopping. Because the there are differences in the requirements with respect to building coverage and pervious surface and and setback areas, which are more conducive to what the state police would like to have with their new headquarters. Uh, so it makes sense. So that process, it will be initiated tomorrow night just with the notice of intent to act as lead agency. It'll come to your board next month as as those rezoning zoning map amendments typically do. Uh, and at the same time, we hope to have the subdivision process initiated with your board so that we can the town can begin to move forward on that process. So those are kind of updates as to recent applications and what you could expect coming forward.
Because this is zoning change, will they be the lead agency?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, they're doing the notice of intent.
But we'll still do site plan approval.
You will still do the site plan approval, correct.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, town board is the lead agency? Zoning board.
No, no, town board is the lead because it's a zoning, it's a zoning map amendment.
Yeah.
This iteration of this project, which has been on the board for a long time. This time, who who's going to own it? The town board or the or the the fire district? Who's going to own the police park?
Well, my understanding is that that the New York State will
Yeah, so you're referring to they wanted to do a integrated building
Correct.
That had
That was way back.
Yeah, like county dispatch in it. I think fire would have had space.
Who's going to own the property?
I think this is just state police.
Just state police.
Police, right.
The state police is
Just, just
Just the state.
Justice.
No, no, no.
Yeah, no, it'll be just the state police that own it. Correct.
They're going to own it. Oh, because previously they were going to rent it from us.
I think this is a change in philosophy.
Yeah, their philosophy
Rental
philosophy over the
Always
That will fund the construction.
Okay.
The town will float a bond or whatever it is, twenty million or some number. I think twenty million was the quoted number. And that bond will be repaid by the state police over a twenty year period. So that at the end of the period, they will take ownership.
Okay.
Yes.
It was really complicated. All right.
The town or the county is floating that bond?
The town is floating that bond. Ooh, town of Somers is what they said at their meeting, at the town meeting.
Okay. That's fine. I just, all right.
Mr. Chairman, if we could just go back real quick to the tractor supply issue. I travel behind that shopping center a lot and and it there was a considerable amount of construction debris piled up against the back of Tractor Supply and, you know, the 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 wings over water reservation that's going on. And and but in all fairness, there's no room for dumpsters and they were piling stuff on both sides of that road. My concern is, and if you said, you know, I was encouraged to hear that the 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 fire prevention group is looking at it because there is a tremendous fire load stacked against the back of that building.
Yes.
It's 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 strapped cardboard pallets that are probably fifteen feet high stacked.
Yeah.
In addition, the inventory from Tractor Supply, which is like shaved wood chips in bales. And I'm sure that I I know the guys in the Fire Prevention Bureau, I'm sure they're all over it.
Yeah.
But as long if if the opportunity comes up to to point that out, that is a an issue.
Yeah, we're It will at the next meeting, won't it?
Yeah, well, we I I've been going back and forth with Mr. Tuma and Mr. Wolfle. We want to have a meeting with with Regency to talk about that particular issue because there there there's a an issue about issuing a certificate of occupancy for kind of the outdoor storage area, which needs to be resolved. And that's where a lot of that material would be transferred to and away from the building. So I I think everybody's aware of the situation and I I think this is a good catalyst to help move that project along, to get it kind of finalized. And the CFO is issued.
And I'm assuming that, you know, the the speed bump issue, because I watched the last town board meeting and there was some pretty vocal opposition to the speed bumps that popped up in Shenarrack.
Well, this is, I think, is a little bit different and and they've actually been designed differently because the Bureau of Fire Prevention was very concerned about how apparatus traverses over. So they've been designed specifically, right? So that they're compatible with
Yep.
the apparatus, but at the same time act as a traffic calming measure.
Yeah, I mean, they, you know, historically, the 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 primary issue was the fact that if there were guys riding on the tailboard of the apparatus and they didn't know that was coming, that would that would be a a risk. But there is also the issue of, I don't know if you're familiar with the like the Onspot chains that hang under the truck.
Right, right.
Those hang typically lower than the chassis.
And they catch
Well, they they tend to bend things up.
Anything else? Good meeting. I hope
Thank you.
Everything we all feel we can help those people said, yeah. Um, next meeting is April tenth, twenty twenty four.